All right, we're going to call this meeting to order at 6:59 and sun and change.
About seven o'clock.
How about seven?
I put seven.
Yeah.
Okay, um, let's see, well, Ms. Senia, you're back. Would you take role, please?
Yes, Mrs. Antonik.
Here.
Mrs. Berry.
Here.
Mrs. Fawaz.
Here.
Mr. Garcia is absent. Mrs. Kaminsky. Oh, I think I heard her say here. Mrs. Krasanik. And myself, Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Is it going to be confusing that, um, that, um, Colleen started taking the minutes and then you're doing, taking, do you want to?
Oh, no, I don't think it is.
Okay.
I did the study session. She can do the regular.
I think so.
Sounds good. I just get him over to, I just get him over to Kristen, um, Mrs. Krasanik.
Okay.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh wait, there might be a problem. I don't have a car.
Brady can drop him off.
What?
There you go.
Wait a minute. Yeah, he could because we're getting a new car tomorrow, but we got to go to Ann Arbor to get it, so I won't be around. But, um, I can get it over there. Yeah, you're right. Brady can take it.
Colleen, take a picture of it on your phone and send it to, uh, Kristen.
There you go.
Okay, I will.
All right, um, now that we've finished the logistics of that, that they are, are needed to hear, um, can we do the consent agenda, please, Ms. Senia?
Yes. Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the June 22nd, 2020 board agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, June 8th, 2020, and the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, June 8th, 2020.
Support.
Support.
We have a motion from Ms. Senia, supported by Mrs. Berry, was that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, the Board of Education approved the items listed on the, on the consent agenda, which include the June 22nd, 2020 board agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, June 8th, 2020, and the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, June 8th, 2020. Is there any questions?
Yes.
Mrs. Tom Fawaz.
Um, for the, uh, for the minutes, and I don't know if this is for Lynn or if it gets forwarded to, uh, Kristen, but, um, for the June 8th minutes and registry and that vote that we took, it has me listed as a yes and I had voted no.
Which, all right, hang on a second.
She can, Kristen, I forwarded the, I forwarded him to Kristen so she can check.
All right, you already got that taken care of?
Which one was that, um, trustee Fawaz?
Uh, for the, the items we're, um, voting on right now, the, uh, consent agenda registry, uh, and minutes, it had me listed as six oh and not as a no, and I was a no.
Um, okay.
On the consent agenda?
Yes. And then, um, also.
That's never happened before.
And what else? Mrs. Fawaz?
Uh, well, I ju, I wanted to correct that portion first, and then in regards to our, um, minutes, I just wanted to ask, um, for the, and I don't know if it's Dr. Musalem or Dr. Morgan or, um, Dr. Lazar, for the ELL ESL program, um, with us, with the company reviewing and us paying out the forty-four, um, thousand, can you please share with everyone, like, how we measure the students', um, performances to see how they've improved?
Well, what, the whole?
Wait a minute here.
The minutes somewhere that you're talking about? The ELL ESL?
They're part of the June 8th minutes to approve.
Okay, so we're approving the minutes. We're not approving the items on the minutes. We've already.
Right. That's what I thought.
Right? We're approving that the minutes reflect what we were, what we've, what, how it was voted on. And that's where you had a problem, and I'm not pointing, I, I can't, I just don't, I can't find it right now, um, with how it was, how you were.
It was a no on the minutes.
Right.
On, on the consent agenda, right?
Right, just.
Okay, I wrote that, I wrote that down, so.
Okay, so then there's just not, there's, we don't, we're not going back and, I mean, you can ask that question again, um, when it comes to questions at the end.
Okay, and then as, as far as the check registry for that time also, um, did we ever, I, I never received anything as far as the, uh, invoice or details or anything for the, uh, attorney bills from January to April?
I haven't yet either. They, they, I, they, I haven't received anything yet either, so they're compiling them. They have a lot that they compile that they do, so.
Okay.
Look, they're coming. Um.
Yeah, we're spending a lot of money on attorney fees.
Yeah.
Yes.
Was that, again, I just want to make sure my notes are correct. Is that January to April?
Yes, please.
Well, I'd like to see it all the way through current.
Yeah, through current. That's good. Even better.
Um, okay, where am I now?
Business report.
We just did the consent agenda, right? Did we vote on it?
We did not vote yet.
Thank you. Um, all in favor then of approving the consent agenda indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any, um, that disagree? Okay, so we've got, uh, one nay, the rest are ayes, and don't forget that Eddie's not here, so.
So we have five, one, and app, one absent.
Right.
So it passes five to one.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh, moving on then to our business report. Good evening, Ms. Morgan.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm good, thank you. It seems that my list keeps getting longer every time, so I'm just.
You're getting shorter. You're just working harder, that's all.
I'm just not sure that it's going to get shorter anytime soon. Our first action item is the approval of the MASP membership.
Madam President?
Um.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have the lead up to these things. Where is that?
Oh, okay, well, it should be, um.
The background info. It just says, uh, approval of MASP membership and recommended action.
Yeah, you don't have background.
No, I don't have any of it.
I do. I don't know why.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Okay, if you go, if you're in board book and you are.
I got it. I got it. I'm sorry. You're right, Dr. Musalem.
We knew you could do it. We knew you could do it.
Okay, go ahead, Penny.
Okay, so the 2020, 2021 membership renewal notice for the MA, Michigan Association of School Boards is attachment 4A1. The board has continually renewed this membership each year. A letter from the executive director of the MASP is enclosed, which outlines what the membership has accomplished over the years to meet our needs. Our membership fees are based on the MDE audited fall pupil account. Account.
Madam President.
Mrs. Krasanik.
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approved the membership renewal for the Michigan Association of School Boards for the fiscal year of 2020 through 2021 at the cost of $7,107. See attachment 4A1.
Support.
We have a motion for Mrs. Krasanik, and who was the support?
Sue.
Nadia.
Supported by Mrs. Kaminsky, that, um, the Crestwood Board of Education approved the membership renewal for the Michigan Association of School Boards for the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 at a cost of $7,107 for attachment 4A1. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The second item on our list is approval of cooperative agreement with Livonia Public Schools. Each year, the Board of Education is asked to renew our annual cooperative education program agreement for Crestwood School District students to receive career technical education services at the Livonia Career Technical Center. The payment for services amounts reflects the state foundation allowance for the 2020, 2021 school year. See attachment 4A2.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Mrs. Berry?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the cooperative education program agreement for the Livonia Career Technical Center for the 2020, 2021 school year. See attachment 4A2.
Support.
Support.
We have a motion from Mrs. Berry, supported by Ms. Senia, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the cooperative education program agreement for the Livonia Career Technical Center for the 2020, 2021 school year as per attachment 4A2. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Number three, approval of cooperative agreement with Wayne Westland Community Schools. It's time to renew our annual cooperative education program agreement between Wayne Westland Community Schools and Crestwood School District as required by the state and according to the present accounting procedures and practices. This agreement allows Crestwood High School students to enroll at the William D. Ford Career Technical Center for the purposes of vocational education classes that are not available through our Dearborn Heights Consortium. See attachment 4A3.
Madam President?
Ms. Senia?
Uh, I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the 2020, 2021 cooperative education agreement with Wayne Westland Community School District as outlined in attachment 4A3.
Support.
We have a motion.
Colleen.
Senia, supported by Mrs. Krasanik, that the Crestwood Board of Education approved the 2020, 2020, 2021 cooperative education agreement with Wayne Westland Community School District as outlined on attachment 4A3. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can Dr. Musalem or Ms. Morgan just give a feedback to the community on what it actually involves, so they know what we're voting on, please?
Okay, sure.
What courses are offered there and such?
Right. Did, did either one, who wants to do this?
I'll let Dr. Musalem do it.
Dr. Musalem's on mute. There you go.
Sorry.
We're willing.
I apologize. I missed the second half of that question. Something was wrong with my AirPod.
Um, she wants, go, Nadia, do you want to repeat your question?
Yeah, just let the public know what it is that we're voting on and what we offer at the, you know, with that, um, uh, entity.
Understood. So, within the Dearborn Heights Consortium, when we talk about the Dearborn Heights Consortium, we're talking about us, District Seven, and, um, Westwood, we are in a partnership with different vocational courses that either we may offer as a district or they may offer as a district, but one or the other does not offer. This, uh, partnership with, um, my apologies, this partnership with, uh, Wayne Westland Community Schools is focuses around technology, it focuses around industrial education, um, and, uh, I believe there is a, a type of, like, nursing program that they can also be part of. So it's basically any CTE, career and technical education services, that we don't offer in our school district, and the reason why we don't offer it is purely logistics. We don't have the, the space for those programs, so they would take these courses over there. Um, and I believe, like, one of the courses, if I remember correctly, has to do with, like, aviation and different things as such. So, any students that have those interest areas, they would spend a portion of their day with their schools, and we share funding.
I don't, I don't, I didn't, actually, no, I didn't hear you. If you said welding?
Welding is part of it, yes.
Welding is part of it.
Industrial enforcement?
I know probably, um, three kids that went through the welding program and graduated and immediately got jobs making decent money as welders. So you can go through that program and come out and be employable, which is very nice.
And the nice thing about it is with our partnership with Henry Ford Colleges is going to also expand those possibilities, so.
That's great. Um, anything further, any further questions? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, number four, approval of contract with Beaumont Hospital for Athletic Trainer. Crestwood School District would like to retain the athletic training services from Beaumont Hospital. We have been utilizing these services in previous years, and it has been very beneficial for the student athletes. The agreement would go into effect on August 1st of 2020 and go through June 30th of 2021 as per attach 4A4.
We're going to sit right on it.
Madam Chair?
Um, who was it?
Nadia.
Mrs. Berry.
I'm sorry, Nadia, you're so soft spoken. Um, Mrs. Berry?
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the athletic training services agreement between Beaumont Hospital, Inc. and the Crestwood School District to be effective August 1st, 2020 and terminate June 30th, 2021 as per attachment 4A4.
Support.
We have a motion from Mrs. Berry, supported by Ms. Senia. That the Crestwood Board of Education approve the athletic training services agreement between Beaumont Hospital Incorporated and the Crestwood School District to be effective August 1st, 2020 and terminate June 30th, 2021 as per attachment 4A4. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number five, approval of purchase order with Redford Safe and Lock Incorporated. Crestwood School District would like to utilize Redford Safe and Lock, Inc. to rekey Riverside Middle School during the 2020, 2021 school year. The district has worked with the company previously to rekey Crestwood High School, and we're completely satisfied with the work that had been completed. See the attached votes.
Madam President?
Mrs. Krasanik?
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the purchase order with Redford Safe and Lock Incorporated in the amount of $24,697.50 for the rekeying of Riverside Middle School. See attachment 4A5.
Support.
Um, we have a motion from Mrs. Krasanik, supported by, who was that?
Mrs. Berry.
Oh, the quiet Mrs. Berry. Um, Crestwood Board of Education approved the purchase order with Redford Safe and Lock Incorporated in the amount of $24,697.50 for the rekeying of Riverside Middle School per attachment 4A5. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Um, Mrs. Kaminsky.
Thank you. Um, my question is with the automated badges that staff has, why is it necessary to rekey Riverside? And if it is necessary to rekey, do we also need to do, um, Kenlock and Hillcrest also?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Please.
That's an excellent question, trustee Kaminsky. The reason why I say that is because currently, yes, we have the automated badges that allow us to get in and out of the main, uh, the main doors that have the, uh, badge system as well as the office area. But the problem that we have is throughout, what we had at Crestwood is the same problem we have at Riverside, is there's like a hundred different keys for the entire building. Through this process, it allows us to narrow it down to one master key for the principal and the custodial maintenance staff to get into every room across the entire school, and then we can also assign keys to teachers wherein they can get into certain areas that they need access to. So, and moreover, God forbid, in a situation wherein we lose power and everything gets locked down, and we have no other means of getting into the building, we still have to have some form of manual lock and key system for the outside doors, um, to ensure that we can enter and exit. So it's going to be much more efficient. And the nice thing about this too, uh, trustee Kaminsky, is that, um, it's easy, with this new system, it'll be very easy for us to change cores. So if a core goes out, if there's a problem with a core, it's very easy for us to change those cores out, because all the cores will be unified and uniform.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much. That was everything and more, and I never can stump you, Dr. Musalem, but I'm going to work on it.
Um, as for, I'd like to, um, take it this minute to thank, um, Scott Jacobs. I know this, the whole idea of this, the whole concept of this was brought to us a while ago from him, and, um, and it sounded like a great idea, and now that it's come into fruition, it's, it's wonderful.
Yes.
Practical and safe. That's what we like. Sala, did you hit your hand up?
Uh, no, thank you. I was grabbing my coffee, but thank you.
Okay, um, is there anything further from anyone? All those in favor indicate by saying aye then?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number six, approval of the purchase order with McGraw-Hill. Crestwood School District usel, utilizes everyday math as the K5 math curriculum. In order to be proactive for future distant learning possibilities, it would be beneficial to move the online version of the supplemental material instead of the paperwork books. This will also allow for instantaneous feedback instead of having to be graded or corrected daily. The software also provides games related to the content area being taught, additional practice tools, and support for struggling students.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, Mrs. Berry?
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the purchase order with McGraw-Hill in the amount of $42,369.90 for everyday math software as per attachment 4A6.
Support.
Support.
Um, we have a motion from Mrs. Berry, and who's supported that? I'm sorry.
Who did?
Supported by Mrs. Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the purchase order with McGraw-Hill in the amount of $42,369.90 for everyday math software for attachment 4A6. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to know, how often do we have to renew that?
This is renewed yearly, and it's paid for out of Title I.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, may I add a comment to that, please?
I thought you were going to.
I wanted.
Repose.
No, no, I'm not opposed. But I, I wanted to add a comment to the community, because I think this is just the right time to say it. With all of the uncertainties with what's going to happen in the fall, what you see is that we are trying to be proactive, and by purchasing this and moving forward with this now, once we get it in our hands, we can have our teachers start dabbling in it and being prepared. But more ever, moreover, Madam Chair, this is the direction we need to go, because it'll save us money in paper costs. So instead of constantly printing and buying these booklets, we go to the software version, and being that we are going to be purchasing, uh, Chromebooks for our students, this falls hand in hand with where our future needs to go, pandemic or no pandemic. I just wanted to say that to the community so they're aware of why we're doing it.
Makes a lot of sense. That's great. Mrs. Fawaz?
Thank you.
Um, so I, I think it's great that we're doing that, and especially with how things are going and having it continue to go virtually. Um, but did we look at other companies besides McGraw-Hill to see if we could get anything, um, less than that or a couple of the ones to compare to?
McGraw-Hill is the only one that does the everyday math, so there's.
They have, yeah, they're the sole proprietor of everyday math. There is no other company that we can go through with that.
And so until we change the K5 curriculum from everyday math, then this is what we have to go with.
Which I want to make clear, we have no intention right now, so don't anyone think that we're, it's okay. I don't want anyone to think that we have an intention of changing anything. We don't, so.
No, and I don't want to put, and, and I don't mean anything, um, Penny, by this, but I don't want to put the idea out there as this is what we have to go with. This is what we chose to go with, because the curriculum, um, committee, uh, and the teacher, the curriculum committee at the school reviewed different companies, and this is the one they chose to go with.
Correct.
Good point, Mrs. Antonik.
Thank you, everybody.
Krasanik, I appreciate that coming from you. Um, okay, we voted on that already. Yes, yes.
Um, let me check. Yes, we did, because I moved the page.
Thank you.
Yes, we did.
Number seven, approval of cooperative agreement with Divine Child. Public schools are provide, able to provide non-core instructional staff to parochial schools in their area in return for the state foundation allowance for the amount of time each student receives instruction from the provided staff member. Time spent with the provided teacher for religious instruction or activities is not allowable for compensation from the state. Shared time is a state of Michigan program that under the Michigan Pupil Accounting Manual allows for public and non-public schools to partner on eligible, non-core elective classes. The 2020, 2021 Divine Child and Crestwood School District Non Core Teacher Agreement is being presented for approval. See attachment 4A7.
Madam President?
Oh, my goodness, um, Ms. Senia.
Um, I move that the Crestwood Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to sign a mutually agreed upon contract with Divine Child Schools for Crestwood to provide non-core instructional staff to Divine Child Schools for the 2020, 2021 school year in return for the state foundation allowance for each student receiving non-core, non-religious instruction from the provided Crestwood instructional, instructional staff member. See attachment 4A7.
Support.
Support.
We have a motion from, um, Ms. Senia, supported by Mrs. Berry. Is that right?
Yes.
Um, but.
Yes.
Oh, Lord.
Are, are you done praying, Mrs. Krasanik?
Yeah, I guess so. I don't think I'm being heard. I, I gotta, I gotta get this right.
That the Crestwood Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to sign a mutually agreed upon contract with Divine Child Schools for Crestwood to provide non-core instructional staff to Divine Child Schools for the 2020, 2021 school year in return for the state foundation allowance for each student receiving non-core, non-religious instruction from the provided Crestwood instructional staff member per attachment 4A7. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes. So, I'm sorry.
Um, so for this one, as you know, I know this has been brought up so many times, but, um, and I'm sure you recall when Brian was here. Um, I still, to this date, I don't know if you did, but we've never, we've always seen where this money, um, came out of our budget, but they were, Brian was supposed to provide how it actually comes back in and actually show the line item of us actually getting money from this, which I never seen. I don't know if you did, um, but we've never seen that. And then also, do we have something to, um, measure the result of using Divine Child?
Measure the result is the money. The measuring of the, the results is the, the amount of money.
The money.
So.
It costs us, so we, we end up, it's a, it's a, it's a win for us.
But we, we never see that money in any of our line items.
Let's see what Penny has to say.
I believe it's in the foundation allowance, but.
Go ahead.
So, the, the revenue comes in through our state aid foundation allowance, so it would have to come off of part of our per pupil allocation, so whatever FTE we collect for those students over there, and I can get the numbers of FTEs that we have and multiply it by the number, dollar amount that we get. It's not separated out specifically for Divine Child. We have to do calculations, and I can do that for you.
Would you like to see that, that broke down?
Yes. I mean, you remember, Donna, we've been asking for that for long before you was here.
I know, I know you were. Um, how about?
And they have danced around, they have danced around that, and I don't know why. It's very easy to give, but they, every time Sala or someone asked for it, they danced around it, and I didn't understand either, so I'm glad that it's going to be answered.
It is, yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty clear, and I think if, um, Penny, if you would, uh, in your spare time, write up, show the, where the money is, kind of follow the money and show where it went to, how we got it, well, how it was divided, that it would be a clearer, it would, it would give a clearer, um, idea of how this.
Of course.
Thank you so much.
It, I'm hoping that I can get in in my Friday update this week. If not, it'll be next week.
This is, there's really no big hurry. I mean, we're, we, that's whenever you can.
Well, I just want to get it done and out of the way. It's fine.
Okay, cool. Um, any other questions or comments? All in favor then, um, I read this, right? Yes. Um, all in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries, five, one. Uh, right, that is, oh, you still have some informational stuff, Ms. Senia.
I do have some informational stuff, so I do not have any more action items for today, but I have two informational items. First of all, the budget update. We will be doing a budget amendment and the next fiscal year budget next week. Um, I'm going to meet with the Subcommittee for Finance and explain all the detail. You'll have all of that stuff in your Friday update. With the preliminary budget, it does look as though all of the realignments is going to save us more than we expected. I don't want to give a final number yet, but we will be adding to the fund balance if my projections are correct. Um, and so that will be on Friday. I just don't want to finalize a number until, um, I go through it one more time.
Oh, you want the grand finale. I know. You want to just sit there and give, leave us hanging for a minute and then, and then spring it on us.
No, I don't spring it. I just like to go through my account numbers multiple times so that I don't make mistakes and making sure that I did it right.
Fine. We'll wait, we'll wait. For good news, why not?
And I also.
Yeah.
And putting the budget in a different format than you're used to, so I did share that in my Friday update, so I just wanted you to be reminded that it is going to be a different look when you see it from previous administration.
That can't be a bad thing. Is it filled with numbers?
It does have numbers, and there will be a budget presentation, a PowerPoint presentation, so it will look like a lot of it.
Wonderful. And I bet that's taken up a lot of your time lately. Working on that in ninety-degree temperatures.
I know.
I know.
Okay, thank you so much, Penny.
There was a question.
Madam Chair, I think Trustee Berry had a question.
Trustee Berry, yes.
I just can't wait. I'm so excited for the good news. I know you're going to save us another million and we're going to be able to spend it on the students.
Hey, as far as.
I'm looking forward to that.
I hear it. I, I mean, tell me how much and that's all I need to know.
Just be careful about spending because they're cutting our budget for next year. So we have to be very careful right now.
Yeah.
I know.
The other important item that we have is the audit update.
Oh, right, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to let you know, I have been in touch with our new auditors. Um, they are working out the process of when they're going to be coming out, how that's going to look, because they also are going through a different change, whether they're going to do a lot of online or virtual, which is highly possible because they know our smart system, so we can get them a login and access and they can look at it that way. Um, I also want to make sure that although we are cleaning up a lot of the things in the accounting, it is highly possible that some of the items that were in audit findings last year may continue to be here because of the timing that we came. So, we didn't get here till January and implemented new procedures in January, so if they test things prior, those may be not as adequate.
Compliant.
Compliant, correct, as it is right now.
Can you imagine that they've only been here since January?
I know.
And the changes that have happened and the money that they found and the, and the work that they've done, and it's very impressive, very impressive.
I'm so excited.
It is, very cool.
It is exciting and we, we've got answers for the questions we've been asking for years.
Yeah.
Teamwork, it's all about teamwork.
Yes.
That's right. Um, okay, it's positive, positive feeling. All right, moving on to the personnel report. Um.
Yes, how are you this evening?
Oh, there you are, you disappeared.
Here.
How are you?
I was quiet. Um, the first item in action items for personnel today um, is to uh, help if I, there we go, um, is the contract with the Staff Connections Company. The nurse that has been servicing our students um, has been with the district for thirteen years. Her previous company, Generation Staffing, has closed her business and so she has signed on and is being represented by Staff Connections for next year.
I'm sorry, does someone have a TV on really loud?
I can hear it.
Yeah, I can too.
Bugging me.
Okay, Madam President?
All right, yes.
You want me to move, move, okay. I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approved the agreement between Staff Connections, Staffing and Crestwood School District for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year.
Support.
We have a motion from Ms. Vancenek, supported by, was that um, Mrs. Berry?
Berry.
Or Fawaz.
Berry.
Okay. So Mrs. Berry, that the Crestwood Board of Education approved the agreement between Staff Connections, Staffing and Crestwood School District for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the second item um, for action today, actually the second and third, we're very excited about to bring these recommendations to you today. Um, the second action item is with regard to the principal of Riverside Middle School. Um, we are recommending that Radwan Awada be appointed as the principal of Riverside Middle School. Mr. Awada holds an educational specialist degree in school administration from Wayne State University, in addition to a master's degree in the art of teaching and a bachelor of arts in biological sciences. He comes with twenty-two years of experience in education, with sixteen of those years served as a school administrator. He has extensive training in project-based learning and the professional learning community's processes, as well as experience with working with diverse students and providing support through programs like the multi-tiered system of support. He has co-chaired several district-level committees and was awarded the PTA Administrator of the Year Award in two thousand and fifteen.
Madam President.
Madam Chair. Mrs. Vancenek.
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approved the hiring of Radwan Awada as principal of Riverside Middle School, according to the administrator contract, step seven, effective on, for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year, see attachment five, A two. Did I miss something?
You did, it's class, your contract, class four.
Oh, 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 I knew I, I knew I went over something. Okay, thank you.
All right, no problem.
Support.
Support.
And uh, who was that supported, Nadia?
Kaminsky.
Kaminsky. Um, you all sound alike today, I think it's me.
I know.
Yeah, we have um, motion that the Crestwood Board of Education approved the hiring of Radwan Awada as principal of Riverside Middle School, according to the administrator contract, class four, step seven, effective for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year for attachment five, A two. Is there any discussion?
Madam President.
Um, this is.
I'm excited.
Vancenek.
I would just like to say, I am so pleased with this uh, awarding this position to this gentleman. Um, a lot of experience in the, in the field and that's what we need and I think he's going to be a phenomenal uh, addition to our, to our school at Riverside. We needed this for, you know, I love uh, Dennis, but I'm, I'm really happy we've got someone with this much background to rely on.
Mm-hmm, I agree. Uh, Mrs. Fawaz.
Um, just for transparency, can you guys uh, can you Linda, go over uh, for everyone the process again of how we got to the determination to get to Mr. Awada?
Does it, is it always the same, can we just ask, is it always the same?
Yes.
So.
Yes, the interview process is the same regardless of the candidate or the position in the district.
Well, if it's an administrator, it's the same thing.
It's the same as a social worker, it's the same as the secretary, it's the same.
Okay, okay.
The people that, the people that review the resumes, the people that review the resumes um, in the original group may change. So for example, if it's a special ed teaching position, I may lean on more people from one department than the other as we go through the resumes, but the process itself is the same.
Um, Mrs. Fawaz, did you want to know like how many people put in for it, that kind of thing?
So, so like, right, for example, for Riverside, you know, there was fifty-plus that put in, I along with, you know, Penny, two of the coordinators, Dr. Musalem narrowed it down from fifty to six and then the hiring committee then reviewed the six, you know, just so everyone can hear.
Okay.
Okay, so um, the process starts out with candidates turning in all of their application material, resume, cover letter, transcripts, certifications, um, letters of recommendation. They attach all of that in a system called Applicrath, which is managed through uh, Wayne County RISA. Um, once they have identified a position that they're interested in applying to, they go ahead and submit their application through Applicrath. Um, several district personnel have access to the Applicrath system. So at that point, um, once the posting closes, we all have the ability to go in and leave notes for each other on several of the candidates as we siphoned through the resumes. Um, once we've, we've eliminated applications because they do not meet the minimum requirements of the job posting, and again, that's a basic checkbox, right? Do you have a master's degree? And this is just an example, so I'm, I'm putting it out there uh, broadly. Do they have a master's degree? Yes, no? How many years of, do they have experience in administration or in the position? Yes, no? How many years? So, that sort of process. Um, and then we align that again to the job posting. Once we have um, brought it down significantly, especially when it is a large number of applicants, because some positions normally get ten, um, but if it is that broad uh, large of a number of candidates, once we've narrowed it down to the area of R twenty, because people haven't met, you know, the checkbox, black and white requirements, we then have discussions as to um, really looking deeply into the resume and um, identifying the best qualified candidates. Those candidates get invited to an interview. Um, the interview committee is normally made up of several stakeholders, parents, um, teachers, uh, in the case of the administrators, we invited paraprofessionals, um, secretary, the coordinators, um, other administrators in the district, because again, that is an administrative team and I normally coordinate the interviews. Um, each of the candidates gets asked the same exact questions, they are provided with the same amount of time to answer those questions. Each of the interview panel has access to um, a ranking rubric. At that point, they put in their notes for each and every single one of the questions and then rank the um, candidates on the four-point rubric. There are five sections in the rubric, um, offhand, we look at, um, they rate them on their job skills, they rate them on their leadership ability, they rate them on team building and interpersonal skills, um, speaking skills and like eye contact and body language. Um, from that point, um, they submit them all. In this case, because the interviews were virtual, it's done electronically. Normally they're done paper pencil. We are required to keep those on file, so those are saved for a certain number of years as is a requirement um, um, outlined in employee law. Um, but the electronic ones are also um, saved in a file. They are um, put all together, I complicate uh, the average score based on the rubrics and then the top-ranked candidate based on those scores, get sent to the superintendent for the second round of interview. Um, at that point, the superintendent has another interview with the top-ranked candidate, um, where he is able to expand on, um, because we as the committee have the ability to say, you know, they mentioned, whatever, they mentioned X program, can you have them, you know, we'd like to know a little bit more about that program. And so he has the ability to ask those follow-up questions within that process and then the recommendation is to the board and the board then either approves our recommendation or does not. Within that process, if the interview committee um, does not like any of the candidates that we interviewed that day, they fully have the option to say, yes, there was a good candidate or two, but we don't think, we think we can do better, in which case we go back and we start um, from scratch all over and do the process as many times as necessary to find the most qualified candidate.
And Dr. Lazar, do we send out um, invitations or national search or are we just strictly post it on the um, Crestwood uh, district uh, website? And then, you know, we, I know we keep uh, the documentation for the candidates and their notes that, how they were rated and scaled, so do we also have the notes for the ones that were not selected, um, of why they weren't selected to go further to the interview process?
I mean, they're, they're there in the, they, they are there in the system. Um, but again, a lot, I, I would say three-quarters of the candidates um, are not chosen to move forward for an interview because they don't have the necessary qualifications based on the job posting. So that is very, that is a very objective decision. I mean, if I had a computer system checklist that, the computer system would get rid of the candidates.
So, so that's what I'm saying. So you have a pile that says candidate A um, did not move forward because did not meet, um, did not have, you know, master's degree or whatever the criteria is, as an example.
Yeah, and yeah, but a lot of times and I, you know, I'll be, when there are eighty of them, you, you, at the beginning of that process, when you're wiping down, you put those in the pile that, you know, there's a pile, this is, you know, this is the pile for people who don't meet the minimum qualifications. And we don't just post it on the website, again, it's posted through Applicrath, which is countywide. Um, we also post it on um, a few other professional organizations in Michigan. Um, I can't, their acronyms are not M A S D.
Michigan Association of Administrators, uh, the net, Michigan Association of Administrators, it hits every um, blog post that we are connected to and or have a membership with. So those people that are looking for an administrative position, they should know where to go. If they don't know where to go, that's, you know, that's any, any district does the same.
Very good.
And, and I will, if I may add, Madam Chair and Trustee Fawaz, I have had people in the past who have emailed me or asked why they didn't get a position and I tell them. I'm very straightforward and respectfully, of course. Um, and I open those doors to anyone. If anyone didn't get an interview or they got an interview and they didn't get selected to come to the final round, I always refer them back to Dr. Lazar first and then if they want to speak to me, I always speak to them as well, or Dr. Lazar and I speak with them together. So we have never closed a door on anyone who wanted feedback, but we are honest and we tell them specifically what it is that they need to work on and or experiences that they need to get. And, you know, we don't go into detail on why a certain candidate received an interview or the next, because that's, that's privacy. But what we will say is, you know, the candidates that went forward, they had expertise or experience in these areas and these are the areas that we currently need for this specific building position. And we always get feedback. And I will say, I've worked with a lot of administrators in my career who, you know, were very good classroom teachers, um, and I've known some people that were very good classroom teachers that struggled in administration. So there's that, there's that balance. A lot of times what we're looking for is that person who has that leadership quality, because when it comes to running a building, it's more than just the instructional strategy and the ability to do as such, it's also that leadership capacity and the experience in that leadership capacity. And there's a lot of teachers who have a lot of leadership capacity because they joined subcommittees, they joined school improvement processes, so on and so forth. And then the interview process, like Dr. Lazar mentioned, eye contact, communication, you know, use of verbiage, I mean, there, there's a lot. Leadership isn't a black and white, you know, decision, as you all know. So, it's a very, very robust system and I assure you, all board members and the public, that we're making decisions that are in the best interest for Crestwood schools, for now and for the future. Because I'm not going to come to a recommendation for the, with the board if it's not someone that I truly believe will be successful.
Thank you.
Did, did all of those people get a letter back?
You know, we're going to.
Madam Chair, just real quick, anyone that applied that didn't get an interview got a response from Applicrath. Okay, it's an Applicrath system. If they didn't get a response from Applicrath, that's something that I'll have Mrs. Frizell check. Anyone that did get an interview that didn't get a finalist, got a letter saying thank you. And anyone that was a finalist that wasn't recommended, got a personal call from me.
Very good. Because this motion.
Thank you.
Is about a person um, seeking employment in the position of principal and it got, it, it kind of veered off into a discussion of practices for hiring.
Yeah.
I'm going to reread the motion, who supported it, um, who made the motion, where, and then we'll take a vote. Um, the Crestwood Board of Education approved the hiring of Radwan Awada as principal of Riverside Middle School, according to the administrator contract, class four, step seven, effective for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year, per attachment eight, five, two. The motion was made by Mrs. Vancenek, it was supported by Mrs. Kaminsky. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
Uh, nay.
One opposed?
Madam Chair.
The motion.
Who was the nay?
So, the motion.
Colleen.
The motion carries, hang on. Motion carries and I think we'd like to offer our congratulations and thank you for patience to our new principal. Congratulations.
I believe Mr. Awada is on, is on the call with us and if.
There he is.
Give him a moment to.
Oh, Mr. Awada, congratulations from Mrs. Vancenek.
Thank you, thank you, board. Um, good evening.
There he is.
President Vancenek, Vice President Vancenek, Secretary Senya, Treasurer Garcia, I know he's absent, uh, Trustee Kaminsky, Trustee Berry, Trustee Fawaz, Superintendent Dr. Musalem, Dr. Lazar, Ms. Morgan and the citizens of Dearborn Heights. Um, I hope you and loved ones are well and continue to be safe during these most unprecedented of times. Um, my name is Radwan Awada and I'm very excited to be joining Dr. Musalem's uh, dynamic team of educational professionals in the Crestwood Public Schools as a principal and team leader of Riverside, of Riverside Middle School. I'm looking forward to continuing my journey as a public servant and remain committed to realizing the vision and mission of the Crestwood Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Musalem and the Dearborn Heights community at large. Very excited to have the opportunity to lead a high-functioning professional learning community at Riverside Middle School where all members will maximize their full potential community at Riverside Middle School where all members will maximize their full potential in a safe, nurturing, and healthy school environment. I'm looking forward to meeting each of you in person and working collaboratively for the betterment of our community. I thank you once again for the vote of confidence and support, and I wish you all a great evening.
Thank you so much.
You too.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Awada, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome. Yes, did someone want to speak? Yes, Mrs. Berry.
Yes, I'm just so excited to have Mr. Awada on board. I know that he's going to do great things at the school just from having Dr. Massalim and Dr. Lazar read his history. So welcome aboard.
Absolutely.
Very lucky to have you. Thank you.
Yeah, very lucky.
Trustee Berry, thank you all for your support. And if I haven't heard your support yet, I hope to do so in the future. God bless you.
God bless you too. Well, we made a good choice there. See, once again, we're brilliant.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to.
Number three.
Number three. I've got a number two here, but it's a number three.
Number three is the recommendation for the principal of Kinlack Elementary School. The recommendation is for Ms. Jill Marvaso. Ms. Marvaso has been in public education for 20 years. Her roles have spanned from the classroom all the way to instructional coaching, both at the building and the district levels as a teacher leader. She has one and a half years of administrative experience through internships and as the acting principal, which were inclusive of experiences at the elementary, middle, and high school level. Ms. Marvaso has a master's degree in curriculum and instruction and a bachelor degree in education from Eastern Michigan University. She has also completed the Path to Leadership Program through the Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals. She has participated in advanced ed reviews and assisted in the formulation of a district-wide school improvement process and served on several district-level committees.
Madam President. See, Colleen, you did the latest, who's calling for the vote for the.
I think it was me, Mrs. Kaminsky.
Okay, Mrs. Kaminsky, go ahead.
Yes, I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Jill Marvaso as principal of Kinlack Elementary School. According to the Administrator Contract Class Three, Step One, effective for the 2020-2021 school year, see attachment 5A3. Support.
We have a motion from Mrs. Kaminsky, supported by Mrs. Berry. Is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
That the Crestwood Board of Education approved the hiring of Jill Marvaso as principal of Kinlack Elementary School. According to the Administrator Contract Class Three, Step One, effective for the 2020-2021 school year, per attachment 5A3. Is there any discussion? Sawa, if you.
Madam President.
You ask how the, how the rec, how the hiring is done, Sawa, I'm going to scream.
Well, I was going to tell you, we already heard it.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, Mrs. Krzanik.
I'm curious as to where she taught and where she was the principal and where she did all of her work. It doesn't say.
Sorry. She comes to us from the Dearborn Public Schools and she was the, she was the acting assistant principal this past school year at Bryant Middle School.
Oh, yeah.
And I think she also served part of her internship at Fortson High School. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Marvaso. And I'm not sure which elementary school, but you, I know you've worked at several.
Well, that, that is a good answer.
I don't know if she's on.
Is she here?
There she is. Yep, she's here.
Okay.
Oh.
This is okay.
How's everyone?
Fine, fine.
Good.
Just about ready to take a vote, so you're just ready for us to take a vote. Did you get answered everything you wanted to know? Was it, Colleen?
Colleen.
Mrs. Krzanik, yes, and I just want to say how impressive her resume was.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have, did we do that, we have a motion? Yes, we did. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Nay.
All right, we've got five.
Five aye.
Five ayes, one opposed. Welcome.
Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Welcome.
You're a welcome addition.
You're so happy.
They are going to just be so happy with you. And you will with them. It's a, it's a darling little place tucked up, a little elementary school tucked up in the corner of, have you been by there?
I have, I have.
Very supportive staff, really, I mean, it's just great. You're going to really like it. I hope you do.
Great parent group.
Yeah.
And both my children went there and it's a wonderful little school. You're right, Donna. It's like a little country school to me.
It does, so.
I know, I don't know why, but.
You haven't stopped smiling, Mrs. Marvaso. You haven't stopped smiling. Congratulations.
Oh, good. Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, Mrs. Marvaso would like to say a few words if it's okay.
Of course.
Just, you know, start by saying that I'm very excited. If you can't tell, you just mentioned that I haven't stopped smiling. And I'm very grateful to be recommended as the next principal of Kinlack Elementary. I welcome this opportunity and cannot wait to get started. I just want to give a big thank you to the Crestwood Board of Education, Dr. Massalim, Dr. Lazar, and all the others stakeholders for their support. I'm very honored to be able to serve the students, families, and community members of Crestwood School District. And I also want to thank my family, my husband Tony and my two children recently. They are truly important.
How old are your children?
I have a 12-year-old, so seventh grader. Nine-year-old will be in fourth grade. They're my pride and joy, right?
Yes, they are.
I would also really quickly, don't think I forgot, like to wish Ms. Marvaso a happy birthday. If I'm not.
Happy birthday.
Today is her birthday.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, what a nice birthday gift.
What a good gift, yeah.
Your present, wonderful birthday present.
Oh, that's terrific. Yeah, I like that.
Thank you everyone.
You're a winner, will you? When, when the people in Kinlack see you, they're going to be thrilled, I can tell you. It's, it's a, it's exciting breath, breath of fresh air.
I wish my kids were still there.
Yeah, you say that all the time, Nadia. We always do, we all do.
I wish.
I wish I could turn back time.
Isn't that funny? But welcome aboard, welcome.
Welcome, Mrs. Marvaso. We'll see you soon. Thank you.
Enjoy your birthday.
Yes, enjoy it.
Dr. Lazar, do you feel a need to go through the interview process?
I just wanted to add a few more comments, if I may. So, you know, sometimes it takes a minute to reflect on things and there was the question as to when the notices go out, letting people know that they have not moved forward. I just want to explain that sometimes there is a lag as we are only recommenders and we hesitate to move forward to formally announce anything until the board approves because it's only the board that can approve those positions. And, and, you know, it's just up until then, it's just a recommendation and nothing is official. And then I just wanted to update everybody on the interview process going on with the remainder of the positions. Again, we completed the interviews for the assistant principals. There were seven candidates and no two. Again, based on the pool that came in, it was very varied. We've had, we had a candidate from as far as Chicago who is looking to relocate to the area who applied and from a very different, different backgrounds, different districts. We will be interviewing for the social work and psychology positions this Wednesday. And we are looking to interview for the PBIS Restorative Practice Facilitator next Tuesday. So those are also coming along. We will have to, I know it was two positions for the psychologist. We only had one, one licensed person apply. And again, that's the process of elimination. The other candidate didn't have a license, so we need somebody who can start immediately and, and we will, if we can get them. So because of this position, we will be reposting that position. And I have reached out to the colleges, to the psychology departments to reach out, for their coordinators to reach out their, their new graduates as well from those programs who have a deeper license.
Very good. Got a lot of people coming in. Did you, Ms. Marvaso, did you see the, the texts that came through from, from Mr. Awada wishing you a happy birthday? I didn't know it came across on your screen, okay. Okay, thank you for the report. The, we have nothing under compensatory education.
Not at this time.
Not at this time. All right, we're moving on then to the superintendent's report. Dr. Massalim, we're back to you.
Back to me. Well, congratulations again to Mrs. Marvaso, Mr. Awada. I'm looking forward to getting things started, so thank you for joining our team. All right, so superintendent's reports, we have one action item, organizational board meeting. Each year, the Board of Education must decide on a date for the annual organizational board meeting. According to board policy, this meeting must occur in the month of July. The suggested date is Monday, July 27, 2020, at 6:30 PM. This will be followed by a regular board meeting to conduct monthly business of the Board of Education at 7 PM.
Madam President.
Ms. Senya.
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education calls a special meeting on Monday, July 27, 2020, at 6:30 PM to hold its organizational meeting, which will be followed by a 7 o'clock regular board meeting to conduct monthly business of the Crestwood Board of Education.
Support.
Support.
We have a motion from Ms. Senya, supported by Mrs. Berry, that the Crestwood Board of Education calls a special meeting on Monday, July 27, 2020, at 6:30 PM to hold its organizational meeting, which will be followed by a 7 PM regular board meeting to conduct monthly business of the Crestwood Board of Education. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Oh, there's the little darling, hearing none.
Oh. Hi.
All those, hi, how are you? All those in favor.
What are we looking at?
Saying aye, we're looking at the daughter.
Daughter.
Yes, the.
Little daughter.
Mrs. Is it Marvaso?
Marvaso, the new principal. Oh, I wish they could sing.
Be a star and come on TV. Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Kristen, are you there? Okay, Kristen left, so I'll have to.
She's still on, she's on.
She's on.
Oh, okay.
I'm here.
There she is, there she is.
Do you make a note of that? You didn't already, July 27, 6:30 organizational meeting.
You got it.
And then 7 o'clock regular meeting. Are we going to have a study session that night?
No study session?
I don't think so. That organizational meeting will take plenty of time. Okay, thanks, Kristen.
You're welcome.
What else did we have? I guess.
Some more updates.
Yes, more, here we go. Thank you.
Yes, I'll go through these fairly quickly. So superintendent's message, so just staffing updates, just as an update that we're continuing to realign staff and I think we're very close to finishing our realignments. Through our realignment of staffing has helped Mrs. Morgan put together her budget report, which will be coming out very soon. And, you know, we're looking at over $700,000 savings, which could possibly be improving and increasing our fund balance. So that's some good news coming out. And that dives directly into COVID updates because, you know, as we've been talking about and based on the letter that was sent out to the families, you know, the state is looking at a, over a $1 billion shortfall for the whole state. Because just as a quick update, so everyone's aware, you know, budgeting for schools comes from income tax, sales tax, comes from sales tax. And with the pandemic and the quarantine, as we all know, sales tax is down. But we are fairly confident that with the realignments that we've made and the savings that we made and our ability to put some more money into the equity fund, we will be able to offset much of this without impacting our teachers and our services to students. So we're excited for that. Moreover, we start our task force discussions tomorrow, Tuesday, on preparing for the fall. And we're going to be working from information that the Wayne County superintendents put together, as well as a tri-county alliance and the feedback we receive from surveys from our parents. I want to thank the parents that responded to the surveys. It was very helpful and it gave us some good insight on your feelings on how things went during the pandemic and, you know, what you would like to see in the fall based on what the governor comes out with. Additionally, graduation, we are looking at, I will be meeting with Mr. Fabris this week to have a conversation about possibly setting up a date. That could be our graduation date. And then once we hear the next announcement from the governor on what we can and cannot do, we will start putting together plans for some form of graduation. So please be prepared as that is coming out. That also goes directly with our fall preparation update. I want to thank our staff, our administrators, our parapros, our teach, I mean, everyone, parents for helping close out this school year successfully and preparing for the fall. And again, going back, just discussing budget update, I want to just reiterate that because of the difficult decisions that we had to make and some of the reorganization that we had to do, we were able to save people jobs, we were able to save our, our staff salaries, and we were able to ensure to streamline our instruction so that, you know, we don't interrupt our children's education. So I want to thank the Board of Education because you supported us through these difficult situations. You knew it wasn't easy and you were there to help. Also, I want to thank Dr. Lazar, as well as all those that were involved in all the interviews past, all the interviews present, all the interviews to come, to ensure that our process is objective. And I'm excited to see our two new principals and I'm looking forward, you know, to see what happens with Hillcrest Elementary. And finally, I want to congratulate Mrs. Shaheen, Deanna Shaheen. She has taken on a principalship in Livonia. The children of Livonia are going to grow because she's going to take the skill sets of Crestwood over to her. So we wish her the best on her new position. So Madam Chair, those are my updates and I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Sawa, what is it?
Dr. Massalim, you'll send us in the Friday update on the breakdown of how we're saving through the losses of each pupil and how we're, like, the breakdown of how we're recuperating and recovering that.
That is going to, that, that will, that is coming in Mrs. Morgan's fin, financial report, which is going to be scheduled. I'm not sure, Madam Chair, if the date has been scheduled yet, if it's been public. But that will be in a full PowerPoint presentation from Mrs. Morgan.
Right, okay.
Is that soon?
Yes. And I'm guessing Mrs. Morgan can only give us part of that information since we don't know yet what the reduction per student will be.
The budget presentation will be on June 30.
Okay. By that, by June 30, are you going to, we're not going to, like, like Mrs. Kaminsky just said, we're not going to know what the reduction will be per student, right?
The budget is always fluid and so it's ever constantly changing. The July budget for the upcoming school year with so many things unknown will change possibly August, September, and October.
So this will, this will be just, this will be up to current.
Correct.
Right, today, and then if it changes, it changes.
Yes.
More, moreover, Madam Chair and Trustee Fawaz, I will have Mrs. Frizell pull up, there was a Friday update that was sent prior to the pandemic that had where all our realignments went and how we saved money from those realignments. Also, that was presented at a board meeting at that time. So I will have Mrs. Frizell pull up those notes and forward that to the board again.
Thank you.
And, and was it still 650 per pupil?
We don't know. These are assumptions that are being made. They're all assumptions. The assumptions are between $400 and $650. But what we do know is that the state as a total is looking at a billion-dollar deficit. How that, how that assumption impacts the Crestwood schools again is $2.2 million. Based on what we've done thus far, if those assumptions, and I want to reiterate, these are assumptions, these are not actual numbers, if those assumptions come to fruition, then we will have saved the budget half of that already and therefore it'll make it much easier to allocate funds as needed. But I want to reiterate, these are assumptions. But we did save the district $700,000 to $800,000 from our staffing realignments. That is, and, and I, again, I will have Mrs. Frizell pull that up because I believe that was the board meeting prior to the whole pandemic when we had to go over, uh, virtual. Because I remember being at. prior to the whole pandemic when we had to go ver, uh, virtual, because I remember being at uh, uh, Riverside Middle School having that discussion.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I'd like that.
Um, all right, if uh, do we, if there were, I guess we don't, do we have any public comments, Dr. Masalim?
Uh, let me double check it, a minute ago we did it, I'm double checking right now. All right, as of eight ten, we do not have any public comments.
Okay. Madam Chair. At this point, yes.
I just wanted to make a comment, um, I wanted to uh give our condolences to our friend, uh, Trustee Garcia on the loss of his youngest brother. Uh, we just want him to know that we're thinking of him and send our sympathies. We love you, Eddie. Um, and uh more uh on the positive side, I wanted to welcome uh Mr. Awada and Ms. Marvaso and we're, to let you know how excited we are for the future of Crestwood. I, you don't know how excited I am, just speaking on my behalf. So I know you're gonna do great things and uh we're here to support you. And we are welcoming you with open arms and we're excited for you. Thank you.
Well said, very well said. I think you said, said what every board member was gonna say. Good job.
She's so good.
She is.
Madam President.
Yes, Mrs. Krzyszczak.
I would just like to say, I lost my mom on June 1st and it's been a very, very rough month for me. I lost another close member of my family about two weeks later and I just want to thank everybody from the community for the outpouring of love that I have received from everyone, um, people that I don't get along with, people that I don't even know that beautiful flowers and it's kind of sad because I couldn't give her the send-off that I wanted to because of the, of the pandemic. And uh, just thank you so much for the outpouring of love and uh. And on, on a different note, I would just like to say, I'm so disheartened tonight. I've been on this board for 22 years and we disagree a lot and I can, I can handle disagreements, but we have never, when we come forward for an administrator hiring, ever had anybody vote no. All the fighting, all the disagreement takes place before and we come as a, as a strong body together to do what's good for the district and I'm just very disheartened tonight at two, at, at two votes. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Colleen. Um, anyone else like to address the, the board or any questions or comments for administrators?
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
Just real quick, I'd just like to thank our families, our students and the community for their patience during this whole, since March. You know, a lot of kids, I think we've mentioned it before, have missed out on a lot and we're trying to do the best that we can. And thanks the administration and our teachers for supporting us in that effort.
Absolutely, and it's a good thing that we are a team, Crestwood, isn't it? Because we pulled together, the communities pulled together through the hardest of times, uh, through loss of family, through loss of friends, we've, we've shored each other up. Um, this has been easy and it's, and it came out of nowhere and we did our best. Our, our new, rather new administrator orchestrated everything and got, got the food out, got the Chromebooks out, got, so the kids could continue in their education. I don't think we could have done much better, I really don't, and I'm very, very proud to be part of this entire situation.
Yes, yes.
Absolutely, commend everybody for the hard work they've put in. Okay, is there anything further? No, hearing none, we could have a motion for adjournment, please.
Still moved.
And we have a motion from Ms. Sanya, supported by.
Support.
By um, Mrs. Kaminsky. All in favor? All right. We are adjourned, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.